Open session, and where our attorney report would happen in closed session.
There are no reportable items from closed session, Dr. Fellow.
Thank you very much. Dr. Miller, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be my pleasure.
Please follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the time for introductions and recognitions. Do any of the trustees have anyone to introduce? If not, Dr. Miller, do you have anyone?
I just have one. On behalf of Dr. Rocha, Dr. Bell, myself, and the entire Board of Trustees, I wanted to thank the staff under the able leadership of Heba Griffith and Valerie Wardlaw and Sarah Flores and Reuben Smith and Cynthia Levo and so many others on an incredibly successful commencement exercise. We had probably the largest commencement crowd that I have seen in many years. I believe we had over 235 or 70 additional graduates this year, and the stadium showed that in terms of the number of people who were there. So I just wanted to thank the staff for their incredible work and certainly thank the faculty and others for participating.
Thank you very much. This is the time where we turn to public comments on non-agenda items. And Ms. Brown?
We have four. Let's begin with Melissa Mickelson. Are you-- Melissa Mickelson is here? Melissa, there you go.
And again, comments will be kept to three minutes.
And to be followed by Kevin Clinton.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm a faculty member of the Shared Governance Calendar Committee and was also present at last week's College Council. As you may know, only two calendar committee meetings were called by Vice President Bob Bell this whole year, both at the very end of the semester just a few weeks ago. The academic senate had to even vote on a resolution requesting that the calendar committee meet. Why the holdup on operations and on letting students and the whole campus know when our next academic year would start so planning could begin? I asked this at the first calendar committee meeting, and no answer was given. I stated that the purb ruling had been out since November, and between November and April nothing was different. So why hadn't we been meeting between November and April 24th? The administration's stall tactic only hurts students and our enrollments. Our lack of planning drives students away from PCC. Our enrollment has already suffered from 2010 when we had a winter and 2013 when we didn't. We've dropped from 40,824 students in 2010 down to 33,062 in 2012. We've lost more than 7,000 students. Our obvious lack of planning is also detrimental to accreditation. Members of the campus community who are involved will surely inform the creditors during the site visit. What shocked me at the College Council meeting was, again, like the College Council meeting in December, when no copies of the alignment chart had been shared prior, similarly, no copies of the calendar presentation or data had been shared with the members of the council before that day. When asked why not, it was revealed that it hadn't been ready. When asked why it hadn't been presented at the calendar committee the weeks before, Vice President Miller said it was all in Dr. Semien's mind at the time. Also disappointing to me were the misstatements that the president told that council. He claimed the administration couldn't, quote, "get a word in edgewise" at the calendar committee meetings, and therefore apparently couldn't present its view. Mind you, he wasn't present at either of the meetings. I was, and I invite the board to view the meetings on YouTube. The calendar committee meetings were conducted using parliamentary procedure and proceeded efficiently and smoothly, which is more than I can say for the college council chaired by President Rocha and advised by PCC's general counsel. The fact is, at the calendar committee, Dr. Semien passed out her memo, and she brought up her points, but the majority voted for a calendar with winter, like the academic senate the week after that. The fact is, the resulting shared governance calendar with winter is not what the president wanted, nor apparently what the board wants. In fact, he told the council-- did you say I had a minute?
Two seconds.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, this moving forward-- President Rocha used this phrase nine times in one hour. It remains-- it just-- this moving forward is oblivious of present consequences that could be present in the future, and it certainly hasn't been learned from the past. I would simply like to ask the board to carefully weigh the numbers, separate fact from fiction, ask critical questions, and make a knowledgeable decision about the next academic year, because it's not too late. Thank you.
Thank you. You have two sheets. Which is this one? It didn't say the other one is for what?
This one was an open one, but I have another one about the town hall.
Do you have-- is it open session? Because he didn't-- okay.
One more about town hall.
Okay.
Kevin?
Hello. I'll try to make this quick. It's good to see all of you again. It's been a while. So I come here today to talk to a problem, but it's already being worked on, so that's the good news. And I'm going to outline the solutions and just one day really inform everyone of what's been going on. So when I was still a student here-- I am now a PCC graduate-- oh, it's Kevin Clinton, by the way, for the minutes. Sorry about that. I'm a PCC alumni. When I was still a student here, I was informed of a problem involving transgender students and their legal names versus their real names. So first day of school, imagine you walk into class, you're a transgender student. You sit down, you have to wait for the first roll call person, and someone says, "Okay, a name that does not match your body and your appearance." You have to then say "here" so you don't get dropped from the course, and then you proceed up to the teacher to say, "Hey, my real name is X," or whatever you would like to imagine in this situation. In that situation, you have essentially been outed, or at least not recognized as who you really are. And so that's the problem. The solution has already been worked on thanks to the wonderful staff in both the admissions and IT department. They started having discussions about this, and that is possibly-- not saying assuredly, but possibly changing it so the roll call sheets reflect the preferred name, which was built into the wonderful LancerPoint system, which is always good news, will be printed out with the preferred name for the first name of students. This could also hopefully be moved on to the blackboard system as well, so it matches and teachers aren't confused, and also possibly to the ID-- the personal PCC IDs. One of the first things that I thought was a problem when I was talking about the ideas for solutions is what if a student puts up an appropriate name for the preferred name and then ends up on the roll call and there's a giggle or something? Well, I mean, we're in a professional environment. We are all adults here as students, and that is not the same as a person having a name that doesn't reflect them and then having that forced upon them versus having a person be immature and irresponsible with their own names. So again, people are working on this. I would hope that you'd like to support it. And, you know, it's really good news on how supportive the staff of PCC has been on this, and I just want to say thank you, and I hope you're all having a good night.
Great. Peter Morse?
Thank you. Members of the board, members of the PCC community, my name is Peter Morse, and I've been a teacher in community colleges for over 20 years in states all across the USA. For the previous 16 years, I've been teaching at Santa Monica College. And I have in the past admired the role the Pasadena City Colleges played as a leader in education in the greater Los Angeles area, but no longer. I'm speaking to you tonight because I believe it's important for you as board members to hear how this institution is perceived by those outside of the local Pasadena echo chamber. When your administration's leadership decided to unilaterally discontinue winter and reconfigure your calendar, expressions of disbelief arose everywhere. It was clear to everyone else in Los Angeles that you would lose considerable enrollment, that student success would suffer along with transfer rates. This has been shown to be true in the intervening years, and it continues catastrophically today as you scramble and fail to attract students. Surrounding college districts, including LA CCD and SMC, are happily welcoming the students that you're underserving, and our enrollments keep on growing strongly and strengthening our local budgets. I personally have seen senior administration leaders at Santa Monica College shake their heads upon hearing that you have not yet finalized your academic calendar and that you are persisting to hold on to the ill-conceived no-winter model. SMC has already finalized its 2016-2017 academic calendar. I ask you, how can robust institutional planning take place when no one even knows the shape of the following academic year? Financially and academically, this is a glaring problem. Unfortunately, there appears to be a willingness to say, "Let's look at this next year," but then to put that off and to put off any meaningful discussion until, again, it can be said, "The timeline's too late. It's too short. We can't fix it now. Let's put this on until next year." Yet another example of a decision made by the administration that's only led to chaos and confusion is the debacle surrounding your ongoing college restructuring. Departments were informed that they would now be having department chairs with no clearly defined roles, no meaningful faculty buy-in, and no academic rationale for why such a shift would increase student success. No one knows when, how, or if this will be implemented, and contradictory information abounds. This should be seen as completely unacceptable. These things point to a serious failure of institutional leadership. The greater Los Angeles area needs a strong PCC focused on student success.
Wrap it up.
But from the outside view, the college seems to merely be stumbling from one crisis to another with absolutely no ability to plan and no willingness to correct for past mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. At this time, we'll do the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for April 2, 2014.
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Martin.
A second.
And a second from Ms. Brown. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, including the student trustee. We also have a special meeting of the minutes for April 19, 2014. Now accept a motion to approve.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Ms. Brown, and I will second that motion. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'd like to record my abstention.
Thank you.
Abstain, please.
Two abstentions. So we have one, two, three, four ayes and two abstentions.
And just a quick question. Why are the minutes of April 30 not ready for us tonight?
No idea.
I don't have an answer for you on that. Trustee Frazier, I'll have to check on that with the president's office. They have to determine that.
All right.
We also observe our key minute person is on vacation. Not saying that's a correlation, but sometimes I can connect dots.
The dots have been so connected.
Thank you. Item number eight is the approval of the consent calendar. You have in front of you two revised copies of 99P and 150B. Do the trustees want any item?
I apologize. I don't have copies of those. There were amendments made to two consent items?
It's in the-- it should be in the folder.
No, I was not given a copy.
Do the trustees want any items pulled today?
On consent?
Yes.
I've got questions about 144B and 146B.
Okay, 144B and 146B. And let's turn to those now.
On one--
Go ahead.
Ask my question now?
Yes.
Yeah, on 144B, that was $5.3 million. That sounds like great news. Is there any elaboration, you know, those various things that are coming in, particularly $4 million in Pell Grants or something?
Oh, I see. You're-- yes.
Yeah, all of the items under 144B add up to $5.3 million, and I--
Right. I'll ask Mr. Simoness to speak to that, and then I think I believe I can speak to the Pell Grant situation, but I'll also ask Dr. Semien to perhaps speak to that if need be. Mr. Simoness?
Yeah, so all of these are increases to the budget. They are grants, specifically certain grant funding related to state and federal dollars that were coming in. It was a nice, unexpected surprise to us. We were able to draw those funds down. Specific to the federal Pell Grant program, it's based on projected future disbursements for the remainder of this fiscal year.
So is that particularly beneficial to the students? $4 million, I think it is.
Yeah, this is all additional funding that comes with state, and this is fairly typical. Sometimes some of these things are tied to funding sources that final distribution is not determined until the year goes by, and they see what allocations are available to provide to all the entities that are recipients of those funds.
But all this stuff is restricted to specific things that are already in place, ongoing?
That's absolutely correct, sir.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be great to have $5.3 million in the regular part of agenda. Cheer about it.
Very good.
What is the difference between 150B that's in the packet and the 150B that I was given 30 seconds ago?
The difference is in the consent item?
Well, yes.
It was in the third sentence under the recommendation. The original said 92, and in parentheses, we had the number of 89-- or the number 89 of Kemp Brother Construction change orders, and the number should be actually 89, both spelled out and numerical. And that's the correction.
In that case, I'd like to request a separate vote on 99P so that I can abstain.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Salvage, you had another comment.
Right, there was a-- something about topping out an account or something, but it involved using a threshold for keeping the account that was dated back-- that was last approved in 1981, I think.
So I think you're referring to item 146B, the reporting and approval of revolving fund reimbursement?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so the board approved in 1981 the amount of $30,000 to be entrusted to the Director of Fiscal Services for the revolving fund. This is a fund that we pay certain expenses out of and that we reimburse and come to the board for approval to reimburse that fund.
Should we prudently increase that because of the passage of 30-some years?
I think I can state that thus far, the $30,000 has been adequate. We get ebbs and flows, and so there has not been a need to increase it of late in the last 20 years, I guess.
30.
30 years, exactly.
Okay, Dr. Salvage?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar without 99P.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Frazier and a second by Mr. Martin. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously, including the student trustee. We'll now turn our attention to 99P, and I'll entertain a motion.
Please approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Brown, a second from Mr. Martin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
One abstention.
We have one abstention and one, two, three, four, five ayes. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the action items today, and number F is the annual report from KPCC, 98.3 FM. And we have with us today, and we're always pleased to have him here, Mr. Bill Davis, who is president of the Southern California Public Radio. Thanks for being here today, Bill.
Thank you for having me. This is a report that I normally give in January, but we were delayed for several reasons. So most of the financial information is nearly a year old. We are, I think, six weeks away or seven weeks away from the end of the current fiscal year. In terms of fiscal year 13, generally a good year, revenues up more than 10 percent, but expenses were up considerably more. We did have a few extraordinary expense items, and so in the operating fund, had a negative variance of about a little bit more than $750,000. We had reserves that we were able to apply to that so that we were able to maintain funding, but obviously, we don't want to have those kinds of shortfalls year over year. This year, in the current fiscal year, I should say, we were moving along quite well until the-- you probably heard on the radio, we've had some-- we haven't been hacked ourselves, but the credit card denial rates have gone up extraordinarily because of the various credit card hacks that have happened with commercial and non-commercial entities such as the DMV. So we're-- on top of that, we're working through those issues, and I think that the end of this fiscal year, we should be hitting right on target, probably at a zero base. So no shortfall, but also not being able to put back anything into the working capital reserve or any other kind of reserve. In terms of the broadcast service on 89.3 KPCC, the audience continues to grow. Last year, the audience was fluctuating in the high 690,000 weekly queue range. The last I saw for this current fiscal year, we were in the 720,000 range, so about a 4% or 5% increase in broadcast audience. Our digital audience continues to grow extraordinarily. Last year was in the 600,000s. This year is well over a million on a monthly unique basis, and then our streaming audio continues to increase. In terms of awards, you know, 2013 was outstanding, and 2014 continues to be a very strong year for the quality of the journalism. I would like to note that last year, we were the first public broadcasting entity ever to win not one but two Editor and Publisher Awards for the quality of our digital news sites. Those awards are almost always given to newspapers and newspaper websites, so for us to win that, both in terms of the quality of the news and the best news site with a weekly audience of a million or fewer, was quite an impressive achievement. But of course, I'm burying the lead, and that is that the chair of our Board of Trustees, Jarl Moen, was announced last week to be the new chief executive officer of National Public Radio. And while that's a great thing for NPR, and we're certainly thrilled about it, that is also a big loss for us. Jarl's the second most generous donor we've had over the course of SCPR's 14 years now. He's obviously been giving generously. The Moen Broadcast Center is named after him, but my hope is that he will bring the same kind of support and visionary leadership that-- to National Public Radio that he helped provide at SCPR. So I'm happy to answer any questions. You all have had the report for a while, so I think that's a fairly quick wrap-up, but I'm happy to answer any questions or address any concerns that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Yes, in your report, it indicates that-- it says KPCC has nine full-time studio engineers, of which six are former PCC students. That's very impressive. It identifies the last two hires. How do the PCC students go about qualifying for those particular types of positions, and how do they apply and go through the application and hiring process?
So there are two ways. The first is-- and the one that has been most utilized is that people take an introduction to broadcasting course at the college, and having taken that then are cleared to become interns. They apply. There's a formal application process. Sometimes they work as studio engineers. Sometimes they work in our newsrooms, and sometimes they work in development or administration. Actually, I should note, in this current fiscal year, so not in the report, but what we're dealing with now, the woman who was just named to be the senior producer of Larry Mantle's Air Talk is also a graduate of the intern program that we have with PCC. So some other people come through who aren't in the broadcast track or not in the journalism track, make an application, and we take those on a case-by-case basis. So-- but almost always, the students come through the journalism or the broadcast track. And as Doug Johnson notes, last year, they had eliminated that course, I believe at least in the first semester of this year that was reintroduced. I cannot tell you with certainty whether or not that course is happening right now.
One thing I did not notice in here, and may be here, was whether there are PCC students who are serving as interns at KPCC. I know in the past there have been. Are there any now? If so, how many? Again, how do they apply and get selected for that?
So there are, I believe, four current PCC students who are interns, and again, I believe all four of them came through the introduction to broadcast and are working in our operations, but I can confirm that for you. I'll check with Doug. And then in terms of the application process, it's just as I explained. They went through the class, they reached out through their faculty member, and then went through that process. There are-- we have had what I'll call over-the-transom requests to participate in the internship program, and we almost always refer those folks to go through the college.
Yeah, that's-- one further question along that line. I was at a meeting this morning where it was mentioned that KPCC may be providing some intern opportunities for Pass Unionified School District students. Is that correct?
I know we have done it in the past. I cannot tell you that there are any PC-- or Pasadena students or from any other PACC district that feeds into the college. As I said, I know that has happened in the past. I do not know whether any of the interns now are students within those school districts.
That would also be something I'd like to know. I know that the Pass Unionified School District is making a truly distinct effort to find intern opportunities for its students. They've got pathways to a college program they put into place, and media is one of the fields in which they're providing interns or seeking interns.
Yeah, the one example that I do remember, and this was not in the current fiscal year, this was last year, there's an application academy, I believe, out of Pasadena High School, and there was a kid who was slinging code for us in developing one of the apps.
Right. So also, as I think Dr. Rocha has had some preliminary discussions with you, our committee here, KPCC committee, I think it's myself and Dr. Mann and Dr. Salvage, would like to get together with you at our mutual convenience sometime, hopefully in the next few weeks, and sit down and have some discussions.
Would be delighted to do that.
Can you give us your contact information so we can--
No problem.
Right, okay.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier?
Thank you. You know, when I moved to the States, my grandmother told me that when I lost my job, I should go to PCC because of KPCC.
Wow.
And so, you know, I've been an avid listener. You know, I miss the BBC, and KPCC is as close as I get, so I want to just start by saying thank you for that. And I came to PCC actually as a broadcast news journalism student originally, before I fell in love with computer science, so-- you know, and so I was a little disappointed to read that our internships were at an all-time low.
Yeah.
And so I've done a little bit of thinking about this, and I'm wondering what it is that we can do, because I've been interviewed for various issues by both KPCC and Lancer Radio, and I think one of my best interviews came from Over Coffee, which is a Lancer Radio show produced by Doc Cannon. She's a wonderful person, and frankly, I wouldn't be surprised if she's on NPR in a few years. So given that I've experienced firsthand the sheer quality and quantity of talent that we have at Lancer Radio and in the program, how is that not translating through to KPCC, and how can we enable it to translate? What is it-- if what we're doing right now, because I see the reasons that are given here--
Right.
So what do we need to do to boost that internship program?
I think fundamentally, the more we can facilitate relationships between our staff and faculty, and then faculty-- they're the linchpin to, you know, directing students-- I almost said kids.
Say kids, it's fine. We're kids.
Directing students to us. As I remember, and again, this is not in the current fiscal year, there were a couple of kids in the previous fiscal year who had worked at Lancer Radio but had not taken the introduction to broadcast, which was, as I understand it, the requirement for doing that. And, you know, I think one of the things we can talk about in terms of the relationship with the department is whether or not that requirement is really a requirement. And I'm happy to have that conversation and do whatever we can do to facilitate interns. I mean, you know, we enjoy our-- interns, I mean, not only is it a great opportunity for them, but it's also a great opportunity for us.
So-- because here's the larger sort of issue that I have had. I-- I arrived at PCC at my grandmother's behest, and God rest her soul, she's in Florida now, like all good Jewish old ladies. And, you know, she, when I arrived here, this is when KPCC moved out of the library and moved to the Moen Broadcast Center.
Mm-hmm.
And having been in the Moen Broadcast Center, it's a beautiful facility, it's fantastic, it's everything that a broadcast center should be. But it's since then that I've noticed, and I've been a student lately for three years, and so I've noticed a bit of a disconnect in the internship programs since then. And so, you know, what I'm, what I guess I'm asking is, can we get away from the traditional model? Is there some way that KPCC and the faculty, and obviously we'll have to talk to our faculty, but perhaps there's some way that we can work to integrate pedagogically those experiences at the radio station?
Right.
Rather than them being these high-profile internships, have it be part of the actual educational experience for a student going through the broadcast journalism, the, you know, radio program? I don't know if that's possible, but is it something that we would be open to discussing?
Oh, absolutely. And in fact, actually, what I would say is, it's not the movement of KPCC to our current location that, to me, is the, is the triggering factor. It's that Doug Johnson, who is on our staff, who was an adjunct faculty member in the broadcast, he was one of the people who was routinely teaching the intro course, and once he dialed that back, the level of participation dropped. So I think, I think there are real human factors in there, as well as pedagogical and systematic, and be happy to talk, to talk about all of them.
Okay, so what I'll say to the, to the rest of the board then, is that I think that, you know, our internship levels are disappointing, and I think that they need to increase. And the way that we can do that is by opening this dialogue. And frankly, if I'd been a student here, and I hadn't, I'd have been here a year earlier, and I'd been able to grab Larry Mantle walking across the Galloway Plaza, I probably would have ended up in broadcast journalism. And I think that's the kind of experience that I missed. So I do know that the distance, and the disconnect, whether physical, whether, you know, ideological, is present. And so what I'd say is that I hope that KPCC and our faculty will start to work together so that we can create a program that really encourages those students not only succeed, but to also get some real-world experience. I think there are ways to do it that will benefit everyone, and I think it just requires us opening a new innovative conversation that doesn't just rely on these faculty recommendations, which are indicated in, you know, Doug's report.
Right.
Because I think that, I think that's a great method for internships.
But it shouldn't be the only one.
Yeah, it shouldn't be the only one. And if KPCC came on campus and recruited and was present with us, I think that would show a lot more, not only to our broadcast journalism students, but to all of the students who are out there who think, maybe I could be the next Aldo, Aldo Guzman Lopez, or whoever it is that's on KPCC doing the news.
Sure.
Mr. Martin.
Okay, I'd like to first thank you for the written report that you gave. It was the right number of pages, it was easy to read, it was easy to get the numbers, it was easy to understand exactly what's happening at the radio station. I want to thank you for your presentation here tonight, which what I would, I would call just right, just capping certain key things in case we missed them, the right length, and of course, then we open up the dialogue, and you can't control that, I understand. Obviously, your board should be proud of the work you are doing. It's a tremendous radio station, you're building it over the many years that you've been with it, you're doing a phenomenal job, and it has many blessings for us at PCC, in and above bringing a Simon in our, the way you give us spots and all the things you do. Few will remember that I was probably the, the fourth vote when the radio station first wanted to move to Mount Wilson and voted no, because I didn't see the benefit to students. It was easy to see the benefit to making it a better radio station, but I didn't see the benefit to students. And I think I was the fourth vote when it finally did move to Wilson, because the presentation that came back showed a direct benefit to PCC students, and that, of course, is the one difference about this license over any others, is that it's owned by a community college. So I deeply share, I'm, so I'm highly appreciative and complimentary of the tremendous job you're doing, and I deeply agree and share Simon's concern for student involvement, as I have for 35 years, that's why we have this radio station. That's, it was student involvement that convinced me that handing it over to professionals like yourself, rather than trying to run it ourselves, was in the best interest of students. And my only comment is, and I certainly share the intern concept, and I would politely slightly disagree with my colleague, Mr. Thompson, that I'm more concerned about PCC interns than I am any high school interns, because we're here representing PCC. But I'd like us to think outside of the box of just interns, and how this radio station can be a more direct benefit to our programs, and you even highlighted one with some personnel changes in, in teaching classes. So rather than try to solve anything tonight, I think we do have a committee, I would charge the committee to, and work with the administration to connect to the faculty, because I have a feeling that you may be more flexible on some of these things than maybe even we are, and a little more nimble in your size and able to make some changes, and I'm sure you're very accommodating, that it's really on us to focus on a priority of how can we use this wonderful, wonderful tool that you have turned into just a fabulous place to really reach out in new and creative ways to benefit our students. So I certainly agree with Simon, only I want to think beyond interns, beyond the box, of other things that can also be accomplished in that, and ask you and the administration and the committee to work together. So next year, there's a special page that talks specifically, and you can make it Page One for me.
Right.
That talks specifically about student benefit, and then you can go in all the Arbitron ratings and all the amazing things that you're, you're doing that you should be so complimented for.
So, thank you for that. And one thing, it's always perilous to, to think out loud in a, in a public forum, but one of the things that I think would be helpful, and Mr. Fraser, your participation in the computer science program might be relevant here. You know, broadcasting is fundamentally moving away from over-the-air, traditional radio broadcast and onto various mobile digital devices and applications. And we have done some really extraordinary work in the development of applications, and there may be some very real opportunities for that kind of real-world app development and just, you know, hacking experience that would be helpful for, for students in a way that has been fundamentally different from what we've done in the past.
I love that kind of creative thinking.
That's fantastic.
Thank you very much. Mr. Davis, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, please...
Ross.
Yes, Ross.
Right, right, we've got a couple of questions. One, how does the listenership, however you measure it, with PC, KPCC compare with the large commercial stations that are in Southern California, or with KCRW?
KCRW, our audience is roughly double theirs. And our, the last book was, we had a 2.2 share and they had a, I believe, a 1 share. So, you know, that, that can vary from time to time, but over the course of the week, it's roughly double what KCRW's is. And then in terms of the other radio stations in the LA area, we usually rank as high as 18th, as low as 22nd in the Arbitron ratings. We're the, usually either the second or the third most listened to news radio station. So KNX is usually number one, and then sometimes one of the other news talkers is number two, and sometimes we're number two, so.
Mr. Davis, how many stations are there in the LA market?
Wow.
You're 18 to 22, so where, what's the...
So, I think of the ones that, of the ones that are rated, they're probably 60-some-odd, 63 if I remember correctly, maybe, maybe more.
Thank you.
So.
And the other question, we get a payment from KPCC annually, and I think it was covered under Public Service Operating Agreements in your report.
Yes.
But it, it says Pasadena Area Community College District, and then UR. Who is UR?
University of Redlands.
Oh, okay.
So we also manage the University of Redlands station.
And, and how much, well, this gives a consolidated figure for the two combined, I guess, about how much is PCC getting per year?
If I remember correctly, it's 250,000, and I, let me check, but I think it's 250, and then, or maybe it's 300, and...
This shows 300, oh.
Yeah, 300 in Redlands is 10.
300 was my recollection.
Yeah, 300, 300 and 10.
We don't usually go by my recollection.
Right.
250, 300,000.
Yeah, and, and as I said, for University of Redlands, about 10,000. So, lastly, what I would just say is, on behalf of all of our Board of Trustees, let me reiterate how grateful we are to the partnership that we've had with the Pasadena Area Community College District. Look forward to meeting with you all. And we had to have, we have had discussions in the past about the possibility of having an informal get-together between the two boards that might not, you know, set off a Brown Act issue. But, you know, we'd love to have a communication with you all that would be, you know, informal and allow for some out-of-the-box kinds of thinking.
Thank you very much. And on behalf of this Board of Trustees, please congratulate your CEO on his new impressive job, and congratulations on the Editor and Publisher Award, which is, being in journalism is a big one. And on behalf of the Board, I will accept your annual report, and we thank you for being here today.
Thank you, and I would note that it's our chairman, not our CEO. I still have my old job, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Cala, before we move on, just really quickly, the KPCC Oversight Committee that we have has three trustees on it. Do we have any civilian or public participation in that group? And is that something that might be worthwhile, given that KPCC...
I don't think it's worthwhile, but do you want to...
Well, that was...
We do not at the moment, since we're all elected officials. I think we would all argue that we have public participation in that committee, so.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to Action Item G today, additions, changes, and deletions to the credit and non-credit curriculum. Do you need any explanation?
I'd like to move approval of the additions and changes.
We have a motion from Mr. Simon, and I will second that motion. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous ayes, including the Board, the trustee. Item number H today is Authorization to Transmit the Third Quarterly Financial Status Report of Pasadena City College, the fiscal year 2013-14. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, I do not. Move approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Simon.
I'll second it.
And a second from Ms. Brown. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, or abstentions, it is unanimous vote. Item number I denied is the Appointment to the Measure P Citizens Oversight Committee, and it is on behalf of the Chairman of the Board here, to make a ad hoc subcommittee, which the Board is going to vote on, and I'd like to appoint Mr. Thompson, Dr. Mann, and Ms. Brown to this ad hoc committee. Their job is to appoint the first five members of that list that are not appointed by the directors, and each trustee is to appoint a member, and I think you have, we have until October.
Yes, yes, exactly. There is plenty of time. We bring this before the Board for the consideration. On the second page of the, of the document of the Agenda Item I is a list of those Measure P participants who will be terming out at the July meeting. The new people do not need to be in place until October, so there is ample of time for the individual Board members to solicit support. On behalf of the District, Dr. Rocha, Dr. Bell, and myself, and others, we want to thank this particular group of Measure P participants for their service. They have been excellent. And there's further enumeration of the details on this action report.
And so the motion tonight is to appoint Mr. Thompson, Dr. Mann, and Ms. Brown to the ad hoc committee on Measure P Citizens Oversight Committee, and that is our motion.
Is that something I missed by something off a moment?
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
For a motion from Mr. Fraser.
I'll second it.
And a second from Ms. Brown, reluctantly.
Yeah, and discussion, the, the first five that don't come from individual trustees, now those are nominees that then get voted on by the Board.
That's correct.
Right, okay.
And all the individ...
I'm sorry.
And all the actual individuals do as well.
Yes.
So in other words, the appointments do as well. So the first five, the subcommittee will bring those five to the full Board for consideration.
But is there, do they just recommend one, or is there a slate, or...
I think it's up to the committee how they want to handle it.
Yeah. The Measure TT Oversight Committee for K, for PUSD, on their website, and it has a list of the members of the committee, shows when they're terming out, that sort of thing. I don't think that's on ours, but they also indicate on there, when they go through the cycle of putting new people on, or when vacancies occur, they have on their website notice, notification. So if somebody's, a member of the public is interested, they have a way of finding out whether or not there's a slot where they could participate.
We can certainly add that information, Trustee Salvage, and Will. Thank you.
Good. So we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimous, including the student trustee. Item number J this evening is the Board Policy Revisions, recommended by the Board Policy Review Committee. We can go through these individually. Does anybody have any comments about 2010 Board membership? 2100 Board Elections, which is straightforward. Mr. Salvage?
Right, the next to the last paragraph, the end, Terms of Office, trustee, et cetera, is her successor has qualified, and there was some question when I was elected and we were having some meetings and all that, whether I should, I could sit in, or should sit in, or that sort of thing. Do we have a clear understanding about what qualified, what the definition of qualified is?
I'm sorry, can you...
The word qualified at the end of the, next to the last paragraph there.
I'm not clear on which policy you're on.
It's on the first page.
2100.
Terms of office.
Yeah, Term of Office, 2100.
Has qualified, so it doesn't mean they're qualified to be a candidate or qualified.
I think it's qualified by the registrar's office.
Okay, so you got your certification.
Yeah.
Okay, if you, if you have your certification and that, and then that First Tride in December passes, you're, you're on the Board.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Well, it's sworn in.
Actually, that, that looks a little weird, because if we're, if we're talking about qualified as terms of the registrar's office, then let's use Dr. Salvage as the example. Dr. Salvage was qualified, I think, in August to run for the seat, is that correct?
Now, this is after the election.
This is after the election.
Oh, this is the after the election.
Right, yeah, this is after the election, yeah.
I still need your...
You have to be confirmed by the registrar after you're elected, which shows you're elected.
We are on, we are on the first page of VP 2100, the second to last paragraph, Terms of Office, and it's the last sentence in that paragraph that they are discussing right now.
Well, if anybody does, if nobody else has a problem with it, that's fine with me. I've got another question on this one, 2100.
Go ahead.
On the second page, Three Board Requested Boundary Adjustments under B, so this is 3B on the second page of 2100. It talks about due to annexation. Just out of curiosity, have we annexed, added area to the district in memory?
To my memory, no. The only thing that occurred was the redistricting that occurred approximately two years ago, 2010, I believe, was the redistricting, and there was some shifting of boundaries as a result of that.
No, but this is for the whole district, you know, if we add something.
I do believe, I could be wrong, that back in the early 80s, there was a sliver of either Temple City or Rosemead that fell in a different district that we didn't annex, to answer your question.
Yeah, if it's not a big piece, if we don't do something drastic, then we wouldn't need to make any adjustments, you know, in the interim.
Mr. Fraser.
I just have one brief comment on this one, that my only concern is that in previous, we sort of practiced on the principle that we would not split up census areas, and we would not split up various demographic areas, we would not split up certain areas, and during the last redistricting and boundary adjustments, we did. I was... I was, and I'm happy to be, to be represented by Trustee Brown. I think Trustee Brown is wonderful. But I was changed from just, from Area 1 to Area 3, and that was a census tract cut. And so, I don't think this is necessarily the way, the place it should go, but I think that as we move forward with these policies, it's important that we remember that we have the, we used to have those principles, that we would not split boundaries, we would not split census tracts, and either we need to remove those from our policies, or we need to actually stick to them. And I can't see it in here, so I'm sure it's going to go in another policy for which I probably won't be the trustee for, so I thought I'd mention it now.
Sometimes they have to be split, because they're supposed to be equal populations within each region, and that's the only way you can do it. Policy number 2110, 2010, 2110, any questions there? Vacancies on the Board.
Was there a significant change from the previous?
No.
No, it says new.
Oh, actually, this is a new, this is a new policy. The CCLC guidelines, Community College League guidelines, are recommending that this policy be put into effect, so Dr. Mann is bringing it here for your attention.
So, when this, when there was a vacancy a couple of years ago, that was not done under a Board, the filling was not done under a Board policy, but under statute or something?
I'm looking at Director Khorovs to ask that question. I believe the answer was the Board followed whatever the prescribed, you know, procedure to it at that time.
I think there was a policy.
Yeah.
There was, but it was a different policy. According to the league, we have to have a separate policy that states how we're going to deal with vacancies on the Board.
I think it was part of another policy, and this is a separate policy. Mr. Martin?
Just for the record, back on Board Policy 2100, where it lists on Page 2, Number 1, Present Trustee Areas, it lists all the cities in our district, and I forwarded through to the administration a technical correction that we do actually have, though very small, a portion of the city of San Gabriel in our district. So, maybe this being as legal as it is, we should include that comment in that 1A.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Since there's no problems, we can vote on these all at one time with a motion with the corrections of Mr. Martin.
I'd move approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Frazier, a second from Dr. Salvage, further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, or abstentions, unanimous vote, including the student trustee. At this time, we turn to Information Items and the Academic Senate Resolutions, Resolutions from the Academic Senate to the Board of Trustees. Ms. Brown?
We have four speakers. We will begin with Chris Pillon, to be followed by Dan Haley, and then Melissa Michelson, and then Pat Rose.
In three minutes, please.
Good evening. The main purpose of policies and procedures is to maintain control and illustrate the scheme and systems of management. Policies and procedures are always put in writing to help governance, compliance, and smooth continuity of processes within an organization. Policies help employees understand their roles and responsibilities within the organization. The responsible and consistent application of policies and procedures develops trust between the members of an organization. It is the Board of Trustees that establishes policies and procedures at this college. To fail to follow Board policy is to be in direct opposition to the expressed wishes of the Board of Trustees. The PCC administration, under the direction of Mark Rocha, has violated and circumvented Board policies on many occasions. The Resolution Before You on the Faculty Hiring Process is one example of this. In order to have trust between the constituent groups on this campus, there must be respect and open communication. This can only be achieved by a management that models this kind of behavior to the rest of the college. Violations of Board policy cannot be ignored. The Faculty Senate is submitting this resolution in the interest of building and guaranteeing mutual trust and respect between the Board, the administration, the faculty, and staff of Pasadena City College through consistent and careful adherence to Board policy. Thank you.
I'm Dan Haley. I'm a librarian here, and I'm also treasurer of the Academic Senate. I'd like to point out a couple of things that are on your board packet regarding the Board Agenda Item K that could be misconstrued if I didn't clarify them here. Number one, it says that these resolutions do not concern 10 plus 1. I can assure you that all of these resolutions do concern 10 plus 1, specifically in student preparation and success. Second, under the Academic Calendar for 2014-2015, it says the Calendar Committee has met and forwarded its recommendation to the College Coordinating Council, which took up the matter on May 8, 2014. I can assure you that the calendar, which had a winter session, which was approved by the Calendar Committee and approved by the Academic Senate, was not discussed at the May 8 meeting. Instead, we had a presentation on a competing calendar, which was not passed by the Calendar Committee. And also, under Number 3, opposing implementation of block scheduling, it says that extensive consultation with the Senate on this matter has occurred. That might make it sound like we've gone through a consultation process, but I want to tell you that the consultation occurred after block scheduling was in place, and it was not extensive consultation, it was basically just one meeting at the Academic Senate. So, I'd like to point those things out to you, and I hope that in your discussions, you have accurate information. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Melissa, are you here? Okay, so that's all our comments.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Superintendent President's report?
No, there's actually an opportunity for them to present.
Pardon?
The Academic Senate presenting on decision.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Reading faces out there saying something's going on.
Thank you, good evening. The, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to be on the agenda, and we hope that after our presentation, you will, we can have a question and answer session. What we're going to be doing today is presenting the resolutions that the Academic Senate passed with each one of the members of the Academic Executive Committee, taking one of these resolutions and presenting them to you. Unfortunately, Pat Rose, our secretary, I was informed, she's involved in an auto accident on her way over here, so she will not be able to present. So, I'll be starting off with the first one, the Academic Calendar Resolution, stating, whereas PCC's Policy Number 2300, Academic Calendar stipulates that a Calendar Committee consisting of members from each of the shared governance groups and a member from each of the bargaining units consults collegially to develop the academic calendar for recommendation to the Board of Trustees, whereas AB 1725 gives faculty a voice and vote in the decision-making process of constructing academic calendar, whereas students, faculty, and counselors of the college need to plan for the upcoming academic year, whereas the Calendar Standing Committee, a shared governance committee, has not yet met this academic year. Resolved at the Academic Senate formally request, the Vice President for Academic Affairs, as co-chair of the Calendar Standing Committee, convene a meeting of the Shared Governance Calendar Committee no later than February 28th, to discuss and establish an academic calendar for 2014-15. Resolution was passed by the Academic Senate, 10 February 2014. Now, General Counsel has found it necessary to write to you regarding our resolutions, but there are some concerns. First of all, let me ask the question, let me answer the question. Why did the Senate pass this resolution? Because we care about our college. The Senate recognized the urgency of having a shared governance calendar created in place as soon as possible, thus creating the resolution. The real question that we should be asking is, why did the administration not convene the calendar sooner? Why did it wait so long? It has been stated repeatedly over the past couple of weeks by the administration of how important it is to have a calendar in place, as well as stating that we are far behind in doing so, yet we waited. It is a shame that General Counsel Cooper has spent some time creating these rebuttals to our resolutions. While Counsel states that the resolution asking for the Calendar Committee to meet is moot, Counsel fails to understand the fundamental problems that waiting has created. The resolution was passed on February 10, 2014, and the district did not convene the calendar until the end of April. Counsel should be concerned with the lax attitude of the administration regarding this important matter. Counsel also states the College Coordinating Council supported forwarding these resolutions to the Board, but Counsel did not state that President Rocha did not want the vote to occur. It is recorded, you can see for yourselves. Counsel states that the Calendar Committee has met and forwarded its recommendation to the College Coordinating Council, which took up the matter on May 8, 2014. What Counsel fails to mention is that the Superintendent President did not discuss the calendar that was approved by the Calendar Committee and the Academic Senate, and then forwarded to College Counsel. Why would Counsel fail to include this very important information in her report to you? Counsel also fails to mention is that what the Superintendent President did discuss was a calendar that was not created by any shared governance committee. Counsel also fails to mention that the Superintendent President did discuss a calendar that was not created by the committee. Her glaring omissions of these key points is a concern, is a cause for concern. I ask you, is Counsel working in the best interest of the college, or is Counsel trying to destroy what little is left of shared governance on this campus? Counsel also fails to mention that on Monday, May 12, the College Counsel did meet to discuss and voted to approve the shared governance calendar that was also approved by the Academic Senate. Finally, Counsel also states the vote is purely advisory to the Superintendent President, and the resolutions come forth as information to the Board. Yes, we are here to advise you on this urgent matter, not the Superintendent President. But let me ask you, let me ask you this. How many problems does our college currently have as a result of taking advice of our Superintendent President? I ask you now to begin to take advice from the people that truly care for our college. Thank you.
Now, the other member of our Executive Committee will address the next resolution.
My name is Manny Perea. I'm the treasurer-elect of the Academic Senate, and I'm here to call your attention to the Academic Senate Resolution on Block Scheduling. I won't read the resolution to you, I just wanted to point out a few things. The first is that the Senate's position is that the administration failed to follow Title V, Article II, which requires collegial consultation with the Senate on the adoption of new standards and policies regarding student preparation and success by implementing the new course schedule. We take this position because the Ad hoc Committee on Scheduling Issues, created by the Senate in December 2012, failed to accurately report its progress and the ultimate result of its work to the Academic Senate, never presenting a draft of the proposed schedule for consultation or discussion. You are misinformed in your packet by the claim that extensive consultation with the Senate on this matter has occurred. Consultation, as it's already been said tonight, takes place before implementation, not after. Both Doctors Bell and Ariano have publicly acknowledged that the Senate was not properly consulted prior to the announcement that the new schedule would be implemented in summer 2014. Dr. Bell made that pronouncement at the March 3 CAPEA meeting, and Dr. Ariano at the April 28 CAPEA meeting. While we appreciate the administration's recent offer to work with faculty regarding individual cases where changes have been made that require curriculum modification, the more appropriate process would have included collegial consultation with the Senate to avoid such problems, not to fix them piecemeal after the fact. On a final note, your packet claims that the AS resolutions do not relate to 10 plus 1 issues. So, let me provide an example of how the new schedule pertains to 10 plus 1. A faculty member who teaches philosophy saw in the new schedule that he had a four-hour class meeting scheduled, something that had never happened before. As a content expert with more than 20 years' experience, he was troubled because he considered it pedagogically unsound to deliver four hours of such dense material to his students in one sitting. Had he and other faculty been consulted prior to the scheduling, administration would have seen from this and other examples that scheduling can, in fact, impact instruction, and is thus a 10 plus 1 issue. Please note, the Senate is not opposed to the new schedule per se. We do object, however, to the process through which the schedule was created and implemented, a process that unfortunately seems to be consistent with the manner in which this administration habitually operates. Thank you.
Hi, I'm standing in for Pat Rose. She wanted to talk to you about integrating adjunct faculty, and you have a resolution in front of you. Some facts before I talk about the need to integrate adjunct faculty into the shared governance work of the college. Adjuncts now teach 40% of the classes at PCC, and now with weekend college classes, six-week classes, eight-week classes, and 16-week classes, all running currently, whether these classes actually fill is another story. I expect they will be teaching more in the future. This spring, adjuncts taught about 1,100 classes at PCC. Adjuncts were also contracted to teach many classes this first summer session, which have now been canceled because of low enrollment, and lost classes means big financial trouble for adjuncts. With the elimination of winter intercession, PCC remains out of step with LA City Colleges' nine campuses, Glendale, Mount SAC, Santa Monica, Citrus College, and College of the Canyons, and we are out of step with Cal State Universities and UCs. What exactly does this mean? Let's say a student wanted to transfer to Cal State Long Beach fall of 2014, but needed to take classes in a winter intercession to get all of the necessary units in place. She could not, she could attend PCC in fall semester, but would need to transfer to Glendale for the winter intercession, but could not return to PCC spring semester because our semesters no longer align. We can have as many summer intercessions as you can cram into the calendar, six-week, eight-week, 16-week, but none of those units transfer for fall transfer 2014. I might add that local high school students are prevented from taking Summer Intercession 1 classes because our academic calendar no longer aligns with theirs, which might explain the low enrollment in Summer Session 1, and the cancellation of many of these classes. Ultimately, the pool of adjunct instructors will be choosing where they want to teach, community colleges in our area which offer winter session classes, or teach spring classes at PCC. Number two, with the college's realignment into schools, what Dr. Rocha refers to as one of his transformative reforms means that the work once done by faculty administrators or deans will now be done by faculty on reassigned time. That means faculty will be spending less time teaching in the classroom, and adjunct faculty will be teaching their classes, which means students have less access to faculty. As part of their contract, full-time teaching faculty have five and a half hours office time per week to meet with students. That means students have direct one-on-one contact with faculty outside the classroom of almost 90 hours per 16-week semester to get tutoring, help with assignments, academic counseling. Adjunct faculty, on the other hand, get six hours a semester to meet with students. If an adjunct is teaching a class that meets three hours weekly with the current average of 30 students per class, that breaks down to 35 minutes of office time for students each week, a little more than one minute per student. I'm still in, Pat Rose is still in touch with an ex-student, a marine with learning disabilities, which were diagnosed at PCC and PTSD, who showed up every week during her office hours for help on writing, and he took two writing classes from her, and he really needed the help. He wasn't so lucky with his math classes taught by adjunct instructors. He used to tell her that he trailed behind his math teacher as she jogged to her class after class to get his questions answered. It's not that she didn't want to help him, but she was off to Mount SAC to teach another class. Until adjuncts get more office hours, I think students who have adjuncts should get a cut in their tuition. Students who have adjunct instructors do not have equal access to the same quality of instruction as those students who have full-time faculty, because they do not have access to instruction outside of the classroom that office hours provide. Number three, and lastly, as adjuncts swell the ranks of instructors here and elsewhere, and the number of full-time faculty diminish, who will do the shared governance work at the college? Serve on the CNI Committee, the Learning Assessment Committee, the Distance Ed Committee? They are teaching stat classes, distance ed classes, and participating in curriculum development and planning. We need full-time faculty, we full-time faculty need their help, we need their expertise. After all, they typically teach at two, often three, different colleges. They bring new ideas, energy, solutions to problems. If we care about student success rather than just paying lip service to it, PCC will acknowledge the invaluable and increasing contribution adjuncts make to this college and integrate those who and integrate those who wish to participate into shared governance activities and compensate them for their work. Thank you.
All right, so to sum up, so what do we have? What we have here on campus is broken shared governance. We had a technical visit, but despite the technical visit, we're still on different pages. We have policies. Policies are not being followed. We have shared governance, shared governance that does, that is not followed either. And we have consequences of that. Couple of months ago, well, back last year, the college decided to spend roughly $3 million to rent out the Rosemead Center for three years, a little under. But when you add the salaries of the faculty, staff, maintenance, it goes above that. So what do we have to show for that? As of today, of the 94 classes that are offered, 53 have been canceled. There's going to be more. We have over 155 classes that have been canceled and there will be more by next week because of the low enrollment. This is a result, this is as a result of the lack of shared governance. If the process would have been followed, we would not be in the, we would not be having the problems that we're currently experiencing. Let me give you a good example of shared governance that does work. I am on the Facilities Master Plan Committee, in which all of you have attended the various visioning sessions, where you have students, you have faculty, you have management, you have the community. They're all participating, and as a result of this participation, we have input, we have buy-in, and what we're not going to have is a problem because everybody is participating. But when that does not happen, we have problems. What is interesting is in the last meeting that we had, is that what I came out of, out of this meeting, based on the information that the architecture firms obtained, is that it's going to take about 15 years to get back to the level that we were at roughly about the year 2000. 15 years, that's how many students we lost. And that's just a projection. It might be longer. So here we are going to ask for a bond, to build additional buildings, to improve the ones that we have, which is good. We definitely need improvement on this campus. But it's not just the structures that we need improvement on. We need improvement with the administration. We need to follow policy. And that's what these resolutions are all about, to ask you to help us to follow policy. And I hope that tonight is a step forward that we can begin to do so. Thank you. Simon, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, at this time I, the attorney can correct me. We cannot have a Q and A because three of these four issues are under negotiation, correct?
Specifically, President Fellow, the calendar, issues concerning adjuncts regarding office hours, reassigned time, compensation are mandatory subjects of bargaining. Regarding block scheduling, the Faculty Association has taken the position that that is a subject of bargaining. They've been asked for authority on that topic, so that is a matter of discussion at the table. So those topics cannot be discussed because that would be negotiating in public. And although these individuals have chosen to do that, I would caution the board that we may not negotiate in public.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier, does your comments deal with any of those issues?
I don't think so, but I would ask that-
Okay, then I will stop you if it does.
I would ask General Counsel just please stop me if I start to go there. I don't think I will, though. I did want to, I have a few questions. The first one deals with the 53 classes at Rosemead being canceled, and this is to administration. Is that accurate? And if so, do we have a reason for it?
I'm going to defer to Dr. Bell on that to respond. Thank you.
Trustee Frazier, I don't know the exact number, and so I'm not going to debate with President Cairo. I know we are canceling classes. There's the cancellation policy we're using across the district, so I can't speak intentionally to the number. There are classes that were offered at the Rosemead Center which have been canceled, so in that respect, he is correct. I don't know the number, however, and I can research that and give you an exact number if you would like.
Well, that would be appreciated. I think that it is important, if there is a question over Rosemead, that we evaluate it. I think we've had a year now of Rosemead and I think it's important that, well, you, I won't be here, but you evaluate it.
Well, and I can assure Trustee Frazier that that is definitely something that the administration is, is planning on doing as we launch the whole Rosemead effort and work specifically to do a needs assessment tied to that, communities' needs and desires.
Wonderful.
And that's part of the process.
And I'm specifically going to refer to the block scheduling resolution, and I'm not going to talk about block scheduling. I'm going to talk about the senate-led Shared Governance Committee on Block Scheduling, and I think I'm okay doing that?
So far.
Okay. So, we're talking about a senate-led Shared Governance Committee. Were there, because this is the first I've heard of it, were there any students that participated in that shared governance, participatory governance committee?
We have the former chair of the committee, if, Paul Gerald, Dr. Gerald? Were, were there any students on that committee?
Why not?
Well, I, I can speak to a little bit of that. The, that committee, I believe, convened under the header, heading of the Enrollment Management Subcommittee of the College Council. And I believe Dr. Ariano was the faculty co-chair and Dr. Gerald was, excuse me, Dr. Ariano was the management co-chair and Dr. Gerald was the faculty co-chair. Is that correct? So if there was not a student on that committee, it was an error, there should have been.
Well, in that case, I want to clarify here because this is talking about a committee created by the senate, not a college council committee, but a senate committee. And so were there two different committees studying this issue in shared governance?
The answer seems to be no.
The academic senate record shows that that committee was formed in the senate at the date that I gave you.
Okay, so now I've got two different answers. I've got one answer saying that this was the enrollment management committee, and I've got another answer saying that this was a senate internal committee but happened to be shared governance, which is correct.
Well, I believe, from my recollection, is that it was formed by the administration with the buy-in of the senate. The problem that we had is number, as, as we're digging deeper into it, is that first of all, the committee last met February 2013.
Okay.
And then-
And this is the committee that you charged on the 28th of January to move towards block scheduling?
This is, this is a committee that was charged by the time I arrived into the senate.
I think it would be good if we can, so we can quickly resolve this. I think Dean Jordan and perhaps co-chair Gerald has something to say, but let's make it quick if we could, folks.
Sure. This, this committee came out of a convert, out of a town hall that was held to discuss the Carnegie unit, and out that, at that town hall, a presentation that I gave with Crystal Colross illustrated the problems that students were having in putting together coherent schedules because of the way that we were scheduling courses that had tremendous amount of overlaps between the start and stop times of the courses. As a result of this town hall, the academic senate formed the Ad Hoc Academic Scheduling Committee that was all faculty with one administrative representative, which was a co-chair, which was our dean of academic affairs, Ophelia Ariano.
And this is the committee, I'm sorry to interrupt you, this is the committee that is referred to in the academic senate resolution right now?
Yes.
So it's not a shared governance committee, it was a faculty committee plus one admin?
Yes.
Okay. Because that's important because, you know, when we talk about shared governance, I think actually number three on the nine-plus-one of students is scheduling. So if we're going to call it shared governance, that's why I asked if there was going to be a, a student there. If this was a faculty committee, that's great. If it's a shared governance committee, that's something else, makes sense. I just wanted to clarify what this was we were talking about. And, you know-
May I for a second?
Sure, please.
And, and in reality, I mean, the, referring to the committee or the process as block scheduling is really a misnomer. What we identified as a result of this town hall was that divisions and disciplines across the campus did not use any uniform template, if you will, as to when start and stop times of classes would be. And as a result of that, it made it very difficult for a student to piece together a reasonable schedule if they were taking classes in different disciplines because they didn't have a common start and stop time. What this, and my impression of what this committee was to do, was to discuss what would be reasonable uniform start times for classes across the disciplines and to try to make sense, put together some kind of uniform start time for classes so that we would allow students to be able to piece together. It didn't change hours classes met, it didn't change anything from a pedagogical point of view that hadn't been done before in any class. It may have started at seven instead of 7:30 or 8:45 instead of 8:20, but it didn't change any patterning of classes that, that we currently were already doing.
Okay, and my final question would just be, there was a reference to what counsel wrote. Am I missing something? What is it the counsel wrote?
Counsel didn't write anything, Mr. Frazier, so I'm not sure what Mr. Cairo is referring to.
Oh, I am referring to recommendations here, that's inside the-
Okay, so the, the recommendation that's attached to this, then-
Right, right.
That was a presumption on your part, Mr. Cairo.
I apologize if it wasn't you, General Counsel. But what, what, some of what Trustee Frazier is pointing out is that, again, the issue of block scheduling, that's, that, the college has that right. What we are referring to is the fact that a committee met, a committee never brought the, their recommendations to the senate. We did not find out about the implementation of the, of this committee's ideas until after the fact. So it never went through the senate, even though it's meant to help out students, apparently, as we can see, students were never consulted. So that, that's the problem. Had they gone through the process, had the senate been involved, had students been involved, we would not be here. But again, it's just a list of problems that exists here due to the lack of-
And I'd like to quickly add that this should have occurred under the rubric of the college council enrollment management committee. And that is an example of, of, of what our challenge is. It should have, it should have occurred with all the shared governance input and for a variety of reasons, it did not, apparently. So I stand corrected, but it really should have occurred in that manner.
And, and this is where our technical visit comes into play. Collegial consultation, we are mutual agreement. We did not agree on this, thing should remain status quo. We go back to status quo, it goes through the process, and if it's, it's so, it's so desires to change, then we go with the change. But again, collegiate consultation, mutual agreement did not occur.
That's it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Will now move on to item number else, or any-
Yes, very briefly, I just wanted to share some good news. Summer 2014 begins on Monday. At the moment, we have just under 15,000 credit students in the headcount representing almost 27,500 enrollments, 36,000 seats. That is, on the non-credit side, we've got roughly 2,000 headcount, enrollment of about 3,400. Capacity-wise, the credit side, we're at 75% and on non-credit, we're at 65%. And then we have the second summer session that will begin approximately at the end of this month. I'm also pleased to report that we are on target to achieve our 13, 14 FTS goals for both, primarily for credit, which is important for our funding going forward. So we give great thanks to our faculty in particular, who has been very supportive of, of the classes that we are teaching and taking the students that we need to serve. The other thing I want to mention is that we had scheduled the Centennial Facilities Master Plan presentation by our three conceptual architects for tomorrow, but due to the travel plans of several board members, as well as our superintendent president, we felt it was important to defer that to give those architects a full opportunity to present their excellent work to as large a group of decision-makers as possible. Other than that, I would just mention that the superintendent's president's report is in writing, as it typically is, from Dr. Rocha, Dr. Bell, and myself in your packets. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now turn to shared governance and for upcoming events, if you have anything to add, Mr. Roscoe from the Associated Students.
Hello. So election results came out and you're stuck with me for another year. Congratulations. The second thing is, second thing, Associated Students are finalizing scholarship, scholarships recipients, and we're going to hand those out pretty soon. I'm really excited to hand those out as well. The new board will be coming in as of June 1st, so I'm looking forward to training them. They're all new people, and I'm the only one continuing on, but I'm really excited to take this time to teach them about shared governance and participatory governance as well as what student wants and student needs are. Some of the things we're looking forward to are working together with Ipro to produce a more, a more data-driven and a more intensive, intensive questions for students in the fall, the student survey. Last but not least, I would like to say and just kind of publicly say thank you for Simon Frazier for being our student trustee this year. It's been amazing having you and it's been amazing sitting here and co-talking with you. But no, you've, you've been wonderful in this board, as well as board of trustees. So thank you so very much. You've been awesome. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Roscoe. Mr. Altamorano, Classified Senate.
Good evening, trustees. The Senate would just like to announce that we're excited for our annual classified day tomorrow. It's been a long time coming. We have about 150 classified staff who'll be heading down to Huntington Library to learn more about the wellness in the workplace. We also have two of our senators, Deborah Cantarell and Jeff Wardrick, who will be attending the California Classified Learning Leadership Institute hosted by the Community College League of California, where they'll be learning valuable leadership tools. And lastly, we're looking forward to our final big event of the fiscal year, which is our classified staff general meeting, which will be in late June. Thank you for your time.
And I'm going to just quickly interrupt and say that Mr. Altamorano was the recipient of this year's RISCR award, one of our most significant achievements. Congratulations, Hartley. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, we're very proud of you. Mr. Cairo, Academic Senate.
Good evening, once again. Well, the academic senate has been extremely busy. It was a very, very busy year, somewhat so that we ended up adding three meetings during academic year. We now have one also scheduled for June, probably one for July due to all the issues that we have ongoing. We had our senate breakfast. I was disappointed to see so many of the board trustees members not be able to make it. It was a success. We have some wonderful faculty that won some awards. Our students are wonderful. It's a shame that you missed it. The big concern that the senate does have is that all of you by now has received the evaluation of the president. You also are aware of the memo that the president wrote, and it's denigrating to the college. And from my perspective, the president of academic senate, I, I cannot see how you have remained silent and not reached out to, to the academic senate and tried to see what we can do to fix it. The executive committee had a very, very good productive meeting with Drs. Bell and Drs. Miller. We appreciated the candor. We do believe that with Drs. Bell and Miller, we can move forward, the, the, the college can heal, but not with Dr. Rocha. The mere fact that he has not wanted to respond to my email, the fact that he wrote these horrible words about our college, I don't think, I've heard any one of you say anything negative about our college. I haven't seen the, the students say anything, the faculty, none as, as the president. And I don't know what point it will be for, for the board of trustees to say that's enough, we need to do something. I know for a fact that if accreditation would occur today, we would not pass. And I know you don't want that to happen, but that's what would happen today. I met, I had a meeting roughly about two weeks ago with fellow senators from other colleges, and what was recommended, that we have a simulated visit, and that seemed like a good idea. Let's have a visiting team come over, have a simulated visit, and, and let them tell us exactly what our problems are right now. Why wait until the fall? Why not find out what our problems are now so we can try to fix them? But we have a lot of problems. And again, the senate is concerned, and I hope that you reach out, I'll reach out to you, and we can try to fix this college, but we do have many, many problems. And ultimately, our, our students will, will suffer. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Douglas from Management Association.
Thank you, President Fellow. First of all, we had our retirement breakfast last Thursday, and I want to thank Mr. Martin for being there and supporting our six retirees. We appreciated having you. Today, we had our monthly management team meeting. I was ensconced in hiring all day, so it was led by my partner in crime, Crystal Colross.
Sure.
Came out real well. And also, we, the Management Association continues to meet and confer with the district on our valuation process and other items in our MOU, and we expect to be able to bring some resolution to those things as promised soon. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Douglas. I will now turn to the board of trustees. Trustee Martin.
Hi, no announcements, thank you.
Ms. Brown.
I have none.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes, on May the 7th, a little over, I guess a week ago tonight, we had a fantastic event in front of City Hall. The Pathic Educational Foundation had a spring event. Edward James Almos was- Edward James Olmos was the speaker, and he was absolutely amazing, right on target, talking about public education, its significance, the role of local schools, the role of community colleges, et cetera, that they play in that. And it was extremely well-attended. We had about 370 or more people there, and just an absolutely wonderful evening. Dr. Miller was there, Dr. Fellow was there, Dr. Salvage was there, and I know Bobby Abrams from the foundation was also there. So PCC was well-represented, and it was just an extraordinary evening. So thanks to all of you for coming and for being a part of that, and for working collectively as we do here to support public education.
And I do have to say, Mr. Thompson did a superb job with his speech, and I think you're president of the foundation.
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Dr. Salvage?
Right, as the semester drew to a close here, and as I've been here for just a little over five months now, I availed myself of a whole bunch of events and ceremonies recognizing students and faculty, the PCC Foundation Awards to faculty members, and a whole bunch of different functions with the students. And I have been impressed beyond all expectation by what our faculty and students do here at the college. And I just wanted to mention that, and I've sent personal communications and graduations to a number. I think that there's a star that was born at the commencement, as far as the singing goes, just following Mr. Black's speech. And I think that college is, you know, doing real, real well this semester. The students and faculty have really pulled together and done some remarkable things. Also, since this is Simon's last meeting here, I've been sitting next to him here since I took office, and it's been a pleasure, and I know it hasn't been easy for him, but I also know that every single thing he's done has been in the best interest of the students of this college.
And thank you. And we'll end with Mr. Frazier.
Well, I hope you'll indulge me for a minute, since this is my last report. Three pieces of bad news for the community college system. One is that I am still on Measure P until July. I'm still on the Triple CT Board until August, and I will be here on the June meeting as a member of the audience. So you're not quite rid of me yet, I'm sorry about that. But the good news is that this is my last meeting, and this is the close of three years of student leadership at PCC. And these have been difficult, tremendously awful and awkward, but also joyous and wonderful times at the same time. And, you know, I have, I don't want to say this has been the best experience of my life, but I will say it's been the most transformative. I do think that, you know, this board and this college is coming out of a dark period, and I think it's doing the right things, all of them. I think whether it's the participatory governance system and the students and the faculty, and I have deep respect for all of the four groups on campus, the deepest respect, because I know that they all believe in student success. But I also know the board believes in student success, too. And even though people disagree on that, what is encouraging to me is when the groups can talk. And that's why I'm going to say that the technical visit wasn't enough. Because the technical visit started a conversation that is now abruptly stopped, and I think it needs to start again, and I think it needs to start again soon. And I say that as now transitioning from being a member of this board and being responsible for the 30,000 students, the employees, the staff, the educational programs here, into a member of the community, and as a member of the community responsible for the 30,000 students, the staff, the faculty, and the programs that we offer here. So there is a lot that we do at this college that goes unmentioned and unthought of, whether it's the Ujima and Puente programs for African-American Hispanic students, whether it is the hard work that Teaching and Learning Center does, not the big signature projects, but, you know, the individual stuff that they do with the students on a day-to-day basis, whether it's every single counselor that sits in the counseling office and deals with 1,000 complaints a minute, and still manages somehow to do it with a smile on their faces. I couldn't do it, but these people can. And so of all of the trouble and all of the drama that this college has had, we're actually a pretty amazing institution. It's one that I'm proud of. It's one that I'm proud to say that I've spent half of my adult life in America in. It's one that I'm proud to say that I'm a graduate of this institution, and I could not have been happier to work with the students that I've worked with. And President Orozco, you're going to do fantastic. I know you will do that. To the administration, even when I've disagreed with you, we have always done so respectfully and with the dialogue, whether it's the faculty who, dear God, you are tenacious in your fight for student success, and dear God, it's amazing to see. The managers who do the exact same thing, and the classified staff who work so often, so frequently without reward and without recognition, but they deserve it every single minute of this day. Every single one of you deserves it. And so this college has transformed me. It's made me who I am. And through the good times and the bads, I am proud to say I'm a PCC graduate, and I have left whatever mark I've had, whether you think it's for good or for ill, whether the rain falls, it's my fault, that's fine. But I'm proud to have been here and to have worked with all of you, and so I'd just like to say thank you. And I'll be here next week or next month to welcome my trustee-elect Marshall Lewis, who won't actually be here, but I'll do it anyway as his ghost, and we'll pretend it'll be very nice. And thank you very much, and I look forward to what the future has, not only for this institution, for me, but also everyone that I've come to know individually. And I look forward to moving forward into the future with you all. So thank you.
Thank you. And on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I want to congratulate you and wish you much success in your future endeavors. You have in front of you the future board meeting dates. The next meeting will be June 25th. This is the time for future agenda items?
I have a question about that. Is that date set in concrete?
Yes.
I'm going to be out of the state.
It is set in concrete, because I'm out of the country until that date.
Who's more important to be here, you or I?
We will miss you. Any other, the other future agenda item that I'd like to, and maybe Mr. Thompson, you can help me frame this. I'd like to put something on the agenda that deals with the foundation's anniversary event that they'd like to hold at the Center of the Arts, and this will deal with permit to allow them to have alcohol?
Yes, I think one of the issues we have to face is the fact that if we're going to expect private or community groups to lease out or rent out the Center for the Arts, I think it's going to be possible for them to be able to serve wine and beer for some of their functions. And so I would want to see us pursue that, put that on an upcoming agenda, so we can discuss it and vote on it.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Frazier?
Though it won't benefit me, I think it will benefit the board to hear an update, and I know that one will come, but an update on the self-study and also the student equity plans. Those are two things that are incredibly important this year. I think that the board should have had an update by now on those two topics, and so I'd like to request those for you and the new trustee, June or July.
Thank you. Mr. Salvage?
Right. Last time I mentioned that I'd like to see at a future meeting, a presentation on enrollment priorities and exactly how the policy is working, what students have, what priorities, and, I mean, how many numbers these are. And this is not just my personal interest, but the vast majority of the people in my district are really concerned about this. I want to know how it's working, and how we know whether or not it's working, and how we expect to improve it.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
One of the future agenda items doesn't have to be next agenda, or even the next month or so, or a couple of months or so, but we need to really set back, look at our policy and our procedures for the commencement of speaker, and so we don't go back through a repeat of what happened this year. And so I'd like to see that put down for a future agenda item, that we can take an objective look at that and make the necessary alterations.
Thank you very much. Anything else? This meeting is adjourned.